The October 20th Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission into order. McKinnon, if you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Drane. Commissioner Drane.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our September 15th meeting in your packet. Are there any questions? I would call for a motion, please.
Second. Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drane. Commissioner Shaw.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Stain.
And Chair Warren.
Stain. We now enter into our public hearing. Hamp.
Mr. Warren, I request that you order that the record for tonight's hearing include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications of each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer those to those witnesses.
Or tell the truth? Thank you very much. In our packets, commissioners, we have the subdivision site development plans. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We have no old business. Is that correct, Mr. Peterson? All right. We move into our public hearing tonight. Our first item is 2022-03-DP Scott and Rachel Cameron have filed an application to amend the general development plan. Development plan conditions on a tract of land containing almost one acres located at 1700 Plano Road with a general development plan.
Thank you Chair Warren. So we had a pre-application meeting date on August the 19th for the property at 1700 Plano Road. And to reiterate, they are proposing to amend the development plan for .97 acres located at the property in order to operate a daycare. The current zoning of the property is office and professional residential. The current land use is commercial. And then the future land use designation is mixed-use residential. So moving over to page two, looking at the site characteristics. This application does comply with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review. Looking down to the site design and compatibility. And then moving over to page three. This application also complies with the majority of the review criteria for the site design. Compatibility of the proposed development should be evaluated by the planning commission. And then getting into the development plan conditions. Looking at their amendments. One, they're amending their hours of operation and expanding them. Two, looks at the existing structures ever replaced. They are limiting their materials in that event. Three, freestanding signage deals with the signage designations. Four, limits the number of employees. Five, looks at parking. Six, deals with lighting and meeting the minimum zoning ordinance requirements. Seven is that any new structure constructed on the property will face Plano Road. Eight, in the event that the property is ever redeveloped, the utilities will be placed underground. Nine, again with redevelopment, the parking will be located outside of the building setback along Plano Road and located to the side and the rear if possible. Ten will be coordination with KYTC to deal with access to the property. And then 11 will deal with tree preservation. Looking at the zoning ordinance requirements. An amendment to any development plan condition will be meeting the requirements that are listed there for you all. And the applicants have supplied the following narrative. And that the planning commission should determine if the applicants have provided sufficient information to address the findings required in section 3.12.8, and if the proposal is compatible with the area. It is also located within the Plano focal point plan. And so pointing out two for your all's review, which will actually be on page six. It's the final two. Which will be PL 13, deals with parking, again to the side and the rear. And so the existing property was developed prior to the adoption of the Plano focal point plan. And a portion of the existing parking is located in front of the building. And so upon the event that it's ever redeveloped, they would be relocating the parking to the side and the rear. But it's not there currently. And then with PL 14A2, deals with spacing of access to the property. And again, it was developed prior to the adoption of the Plano focal point plan. And so KYTC reviewed the application and proposed use and confirmed with staff that the location of the existing entrances are suitable for the proposed daycare. Looking down to the focus 2030 category, staff evaluated 12 items. And I would just like to point out just a few for your all's consideration. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development plan amendment, including a conversion in the use of the property from a professional use to a daycare, is compatible with the area and the application. And therefore would comply with LU 1.1.3. The proposal may also comply with LU 2. The planning commission should determine if the proposed amendment will result in high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. And then looking to page seven, the proposal may also comply with HN1 and HN 1.3. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a suitable infill project that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area, and if it will strengthen the Plano community. Moving back to page one and looking at some final points to consider. The application complies with the majority of the review criteria assessed by staff. And the current OPR zone was established in 2017. And in 2017, the previous owner limited the property only to office use. The applicants recently acquired the property from the previous owner and would like to amend the development plan in order to utilize the property for a daycare. That is all that staff have, but we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions for this zoning map amendment change? Okay. Is the applicant here or their representative would like to make any comments? If sir, if one or either one of you would come.
No, I just thought you were here.
Yeah, no, you're here. Just please come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Rachel Cameron. 43 Jesson Road East, Lisper, Kentucky 42256.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have anything else you would like to add to this report tonight?
Um, no. I will tell a little thing. We own a daycare now beside Greenwood High School. And the school is kind of wanting to take that property and expand their parking. And I think for soccer use too is what the owner of the building has expressed to me. I just rent there now, but I've purchased this property and most of my children come from the Albaton Plano area. So I think it would be a great asset if we could just move them to this new location.
Well, thank you very much, Rachel. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has questions regarding this? Thank you very much. Hearing none, commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment docket number 2022-03-DP. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed general development plan is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes of economic, physical, and social nature within the area of the property in question. And I request the findings of facts and recommendations include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. The motion is approved and will, it's a final action by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our next item tonight is 2022-74Z County James Melvin Land Company LLC and Heartland Sign Solutions care of Laura Gilbert. Has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 1.66 acres located at zero Porter Pike from ag to general business with a general development plan.
Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting for the property on May 9th of this year. And to reiterate, the applicants are proposing to rezone 1.66 acres located on Porter Pike from ag to general business in order to develop the property with seven condo units that will be rented out for short-term rental use. The current zoning of the property is ag. The current land use is vacant. And then the flume designation is mixed-use residential. So moving over to page two and looking again at the site characteristics. This application does comply with the majority of the items assessed in the site characteristics review. Looking down to site design and compatibility. Pointing out the density. Residential uses in the vicinity are mainly rural with the exception of the homes located on Clark Circle, and those are typically low-density. Higher-density residential uses exist southwest of the property. And they're proposing to develop the property, again with seven condo units that will be rented out for short-term rental use. This results in a density of 4.22 dwelling units per acre. However, there is nothing included in the DPCs limiting the development to this density. Then moving down to the building orientation. The majority of the existing structures along Porter Pike have a front facade that faces Porter Pike. The DPCs for the 2021 zone change on the south side of Porter Pike require that facades within 200 feet face Porter Pike. The applicants did not address building orientation or any screening treatments for the proposed development. The submitted concept planning indicates that the proposed building will actually have a side facade that faces Porter Pike. So the application does comply with the majority of the review criteria for site design with considerations noted again regarding the density and building orientation. And the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. Looking down to the development plan conditions. One deals with the use of the property to multifamily residential and short-term rental uses. Two, looks at building materials. Three, limits the structures to be no more than three stories tall. Four, actually prohibits uses on the property. Five, deals with signage. Six, looks at utilities being placed underground. Seven, deals with access to the property in coordination with KYTC. Eight, deals with tree preservation. And nine, deals with sinkhole mitigation. And 10 is the development will be, or the property will be developed with a minimum of 40% open space. Then looking at the focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 16 items. And I would just like to point out a few. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is again compatible with the area, including the proposed density and building orientation, and if it will comply with LU 1.1.3. The proposal may also comply with LU 2 if the planning commission deems the proposal to be a high-quality development, including the proposed building orientation, and if it includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The proposal may comply with HN1 and HN 1.3. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible infill development that will maintain or improve existing character and pattern of development within the area, including the proposed density and building orientation, and if it will strengthen nearby neighborhoods. And finally, the proposal may comply with HN 2.1 and HN 4. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location and if it will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So looking back to page one with some final points to consider. The preliminary development plan depicts seven residential units. However, there is nothing in the DPCs limiting the development to this number of units. And the majority of the existing structures along Porter Pike have a front facade that faces Porter Pike again. The DPCs for the 2021 zone change on the south side require that facades within 200 feet face Porter Pike. The applicants did not address building orientation or any screening treatments. And the submitted concept plan indicates that the proposed building will have a side facade that faces Porter Pike. That is all that staff have for this application, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions from the staff report? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here or their representative if they would like to make a comment? If you would come to the microphone, please. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Your name, please?
Laura Gilbert.
Laura, your address?
171 Big Baron Trail, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments you would like to make to this staff report?
No, our whole goal is really to provide some type of kind of, a lot of glass steel that actually looks out towards the motorsports park. And then have garages at the bottom. One of my good friends works at Holly where we could like, you know, maybe do a couple lifts where when people come into town, they can bring their cars in, you know, garages and stuff like that. And just really do kind of a cool, different, modern look.
Are you okay limiting it to seven units?
I am.
So can we add that in?
Mm-hmm, sure can. Yeah, I don't want a ton. I just want them to be nice.
We're just tying up.
No, no, I get it.
Right. And then.
So number one will be amended to take seven multifamily residential uses. I'm sorry for interrupt.
And Ms. Gilbert, I have a question. On page number three on the building material review. It says existing agriculture buildings have wooden exteriors. Home have exteriors composed of a mix of brick and vinyl.
So it's one of those things where we didn't want to go too far in the design process if we weren't going to be able to get the zoning change. And so I guess in my mind, like we have a picture of something, I guess, out in Iowa. I don't, do you have them? Okay. I found.
Are you okay putting in there no vinyl?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So which PC would?
I'd say number two. Yeah, just somewhere I would put no vinyl.
I just found.
No vinyl except for softits?
Softits, yes.
So this is kind of what is the closest thing I could find to whatever is in my head, you know, kind of something. And it's one of those things we have to work with an architect. But something unique and different. If you Google like the coolest garages, it's Ferris Bueller day off garage, you know, with the concrete floors and then, you know, it's majority glass. And just kind of something that is unique and would make, you know, the car enthusiasts want to stay there.
We're not, we're not, we just have to kind of tighten this up tonight.
Okay.
So that when we approve this, it's kind of set in stone. Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Gilbert? Thank you very much.
You all.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has questions regarding this proposal or a comment? Hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number 2022-74ZCO. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and actions, action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Drane.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is item number three, 2022-76ZBG. The Intermodal Transportation Authority care of Ron Bunch has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 2.3 acres located zero Fred Madison Road from RE residential estate and ag to heavy industrial with a general development plan.
Thank you Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting on September 16th of this year for this property located on Fred Madison Road. And again, to reiterate, they are proposing to rezone 2.28 acres from ag and residential estate to heavy industrial in order to expand the transpark. So looking at the current zoning of the property, it is again ag and RE. The current use is vacant. And then the future land use designation is industrial. So moving over to page two, looking at the site characteristics. The application does comply with a majority of the criteria evaluated in the site characteristics review. Looking down to site design and compatibility and then moving over to page three. This application also complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design as well. Looking at the general development plan conditions. The property, since it's expanding the transpark, they're actually going to use the DPCs that are applicable to the properties to the north and the east. And those are listed all there for your reference as well. Moving over to page five, looking at the focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 12 items, and I'll just point out a couple. Again, the planning commission should determine if the development is compatible with the surrounding area and if the proposal complies with LU 1.1.3. The proposal may also comply with LU 2 if the planning commission deems the proposal to be high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. And the proposal does not comply with LU 2.1.4 or NCR 1.1.6. The applicants have not agreed to preserve any of the existing vegetation located on the property. Looking back over to page one with some final points to consider. If approved, the subject properties will be consolidated with the transpark and assume the same DPCs as the adjacent 296.41 acres that are generally located adjacent to the property along the northern and eastern property lines. And the application does comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process with the considerations noted regarding the preservation of existing mature trees. And that is all that staff have for this application, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions from the staff report? The applicant here or their representative would like to make a comment or to add to this application?
We prefer not to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question regarding this application tonight? Hearing none, we call for a motion, please, commissioners.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan docket number 2022-76ZBG. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drane. Commissioner Shaw.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. The motion is approved and will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Our next item tonight is 2022-77Z County NC Brands LLC care of Evan Noel and Jay Coberson. Have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 1.56 acres located at 9940 Albaton Road from office, professional, residential, to general business with a general development plan. If this is approved, they have, in item number five, have applied for a variance from the required building setbacks to allow the existing structure to remain 10 feet off the northern property line. The property is zoned office and professional.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on April the 4th of this year for the property that you mentioned, and that is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is OPR. The current land use is commercial. The proposed land use is commercial. And the future land use is rural village. As you mentioned, the applicants are looking to rezone from OPR to general business in order to allow flexibility in uses on the property. As the current bounding elements are, they restrict the use of the property to a professional office for family counseling. So if the rezone is successful, the applicants are also requesting a 30-foot variance from the required 40-foot building setback that is adjacent to a single-family residential zone. And that would allow the existing structure to remain 10 feet from the northern property line. And the applicants did submit an exhibit that shows that information there. Looking over to the site characteristics review. Down at the water adequacy. The property is served by the Warren County Water District and is not currently served or provided with adequate water pressure to meet the minimum fire protection requirements for commercial use. Upgrades to the existing infrastructure will be required before any additional commercial use can occur on the property. And this application complies with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review with considerations noted regarding the existing water and sewer availability. And the setback adjacent to the RE zone property to the north for which the applicants have requested a variance. Looking over at the site design and compatibility review. The building orientation. The Scottsville Road corridor study recommends that all development visible from Scottsville Road be designed in such a way to appear to face Scottsville Road regardless of the location of the driveway access and parking. The existing building does face Albaton Road and Scottsville Road, and the applicants agreed in DPC number four that any new structures will also be oriented in the same manner. Looking down to the signage. Again, the Scottsville Road corridor study recommends that new signage be monument style with a lower square footage cap, as well as prohibit LED signs. The applicants agreed in DPC number eight that new freestanding signage shall be monument style with a height no greater than 25 feet and no greater than 120 square feet in sign face area. The DPCs for the Albaton Express property limited freestanding signage to a minimum of 17 feet for reference there. Looking down at the proposed open space. The maximum allowable lot coverage in the general business zone is 80%, meaning at least 20% will be open space. And the Scottsville Road corridor study includes a recommendation for open space for new development. And the applicants only agree to abide by the minimum required in the general business, and that is in DPC number 10. So to summarize, this application complies with the majority of the items in the site design and compatibility review with considerations noted regarding the proposed sun height and open space. So looking down at the area-specific policy review. This proposed development is in the boundary of the Scottsville Road corridor study. And I will just highlight a few of those items for you to consider. Looking over to page four. Number five is again that. The signage to be monument style. And the planning commission should determine compliance with this recommendation as the applicants agreed in DPC number eight. That any new freestanding signage shall be monument style with height no greater than 25 feet and no greater than 120 square feet. Looking at number six is a requirement that either no parking be allowed in the building setback along Scottsville Road or have parking to be to the rear of the building as long as the rear is not Scottsville Road. So the preliminary development plan shows that the existing parking is located behind the existing structure outside of the building setback along Albaton Road. The applicants further agreed in DPC number 11 that any new parking spaces shall be located outside of the front building setback. And the proposal generally complies with this recommendation. Looking down at number nine, which is open green space. And again, the applicants agree to abide by the minimum open space requirement for the GB zone in DPC number 10. And the planning commission should determine if this is adequately addressed for this recommendation. Looking over at the general development plan conditions. Number one, all utility improvements should be located underground. Number two, the proposed structure, along with any accessory structures, shall not exceed 10,000 square feet. And the maximum building height shall be 28 feet. Number three, prohibit certain uses on the property. Number four, all new structures constructed on the property will have a front facade that faces Albaton Scottsville Road. Facades facing Scottsville Road shall be constructed with 100%, will shall be constructed with 100% brick, stone, masonry, cementitious material. All other facades will incorporate at least 50% of these same materials. And the use of plain-faced or split-faced block shall be prohibited. Number five, all roof-level heat and air conditioning equipment and similar facilities shall be screened from public view. Number six, there shall be no outdoor storage with 60 feet of the right way of Scottsville Road. Number seven, addresses access. Number eight, addresses the signage. Number nine, addresses pre-tree preservation. Number 10 deals with the open space. Number 11 addresses sinkholes. Number 12 addresses parking location. And number 13, if the existing residence is ever demolished, habitat for humanity restore or similar nonprofit. or similar nonprofit organization will be afforded an opportunity to inspect the residence and remove any salvageable items. Also, the structure will be offered to local fire departments for training purposes prior to demolition. So the proposed general development plan meets the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. Looking over at the Focus 2030 category review, staff reviewed 18 items, and I'll highlight six for your consideration. The proposal may comply with LU 2.5.2. The planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development protects Albaton's rural character, if the proposed development is compatible with the area, and if it complies with LU 2.9. The proposed development may comply with NCR 2.4 and NCR 2.4.3. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development will preserve and enhance Albaton's rural village center, and if the proposed development will be compatible with the area, and if it will contribute to the historic character of the community. The proposal may not comply with NCR 2.4.1 as the development is proposed in an area where adequate water pressure and flow to minimum fire protection requirements for commercial use does not currently exist. Also, sewer must be extended to the area. The proposal may comply with ED1 and ED3. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development will help diversify the local economy and if it supports the entrepreneurial endeavors. Moving on to the variance portion of the application, we have the zoning ordinance there referenced for you to look at. That's Article 4, Section 4.6.8.C.1, additional setback adjacent to a single-family residential structure or use. The applicants are requesting a 30-foot variance from the required 40-foot building setback adjacent to a single-family residential zone along the northern property line. And again, this would allow the existing structure to remain 10 feet from the northern property line. We have the variance findings there that are in KRS 100.2.4.3 for you to review. The applicants did supply a narrative that helped address those variance findings, and the planning commission should consider if the applicants have adequately addressed the findings required for granting a variance. Looking back at the first page, the submitted DPCs are not the same but are very similar to those approved for the Albaton Express property in 2019 and the property at 10141 Albaton Road that were earlier this year. The main difference is the proposed height allowance for freestanding signage at 25 feet compared to 17 feet. And the proposal complies with some of the review criteria listed in the review process with considerations noted regarding the existing water and sewer availability, the building setback adjacent to an RE-zoned property for which the applicants have requested the variance, and compliance with some of the recommendations from the Scottsville Road corridor study. So that is all for this staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the staff?
Do we know why they're asking for the eight-foot difference in the sign?
I think the applicants might have to answer that question there.
The water issue, the fire protection, will not be taken care of. That mean, that's not part of theirs. All they're doing is bringing sewer.
Sending the sewer, correct.
Right.
Yeah, and water.
The water will be to the...
Yeah, that's what they want.
Gotcha. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. Any other questions, commissioners? All right. Is the applicant here or their representative and would like to make a comment? Either one of you? Yes, sir. Your name?
Sir, my name is Evan Noel.
Okay. Evan, and your address, please?
766 Old Mount Pleasant School Road, Albaton.
Evan, you swear to tell the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure do.
So can you give us an idea of why you are asking, go from 17 to 25 feet on the sign?
Through the location of existing signage, and if that were to ever be changed, it would be in a similar location where that specific spot is sitting that exact variance that far below the level of the road. So that sign is actually sitting about eight or nine foot below the level of the current, below Scottsville Road currently, just the way the land lays.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Noel? Thank you, sir. Does anyone in the audience have a question regarding this proposal or comment? Hearing none, commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number 2022-77-Z-CO. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
The zoning change amendment has been approved, and we need a motion for the variance for this property.
I'll make the motion to approve the request for the variance at 9940 Albaton Road, docket number 2022-V20, a variance of 30 feet to allow the existing building to be located 10 feet from the adjacent RE-zoned property. The testimony presented at this public hearing has shown that granting this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare, and will not alter the essential character of the general facility vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumance of requirements of the zoning regulations.
Second. Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Ma'am, the zoning amendment is approved and will go to Warren County Fiscal Court. The variance was the planning commission's final action. Our next item tonight is 2022-78ZBG. Vena R. Sony has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 3.4 acres located at zero Russellville Road, formerly 5836 Russellville Road, from ag to general business with a general development plan.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in June for the property you just outlined on Russellville Road. The current zoning is agriculture, and the current use is vacant, and the future land use designation is mixed-use residential. Looking at the site characteristics review on page two, just highlighting a few things about the layout of the site. This is the proposed layout. Setbacks will adhere to the general business standards set forth in the zoning ordinance. This property is also in the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan area, which recommends that a minimum of 50% of all required parking be to the rear of the front building line for the commercial development, and that parking should not be located within any required building setback line. And you'll see on the concept that the majority of the required parking is proposed in front of the buildings. It is, however, located outside of the required setback lines. Touching on the natural features, I'll jump back to the aerial view. You can see that there is a mature line of trees around the side and rear property lines, and the applicants did not address preservation of any of the existing vegetation that is currently located on the site. And then on page three, there's a few things in the site design and compatibility review that we'll touch on here. The first being building orientation, and that the current development plan conditions would not require primary structures to be front-facing. Second, looking at signage, the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan recommends that signage be limited to two signs, one freestanding sign and one wall sign per property. And the applicant is proposing that the development be limited to no more than one wall sign per structure and one freestanding sign per lot. And as proposed, the applicant could actually subdivide the property to where the development as a whole could have two freestanding signs, and the proposal also does not comply with the recommendation as it relates to wall signage. On page four, we've noted that a traffic impact study was not required by KYTC in lieu of the development being limited to two entrances and that such entrances would be right-in, right-out only. Those entrances are shown on the concept plan, and the applicants did agree to this requirement in the development plan condition nine. Touching on the area-specific policy review for Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan, just a couple of items. First, WV1B, which looks at the location of parking, which I had noted previously. The applicant communicated to staff that for drainage reasons, they do not wish to move the parking behind the buildings, and so the application generally does not comply with WV1B. And then on page five, again, touching on the signage recommendations for the Walnut Valley Focal Point, and I had noted earlier that the proposal generally does not comply with this policy. The development plan conditions are listed on page six. I'll run through those really quick. Number one outlines permitted materials for the exterior of the proposed structures. Two addresses building orientation. Three looks at signage. Four requires underground utilities. Five addresses sinkholes. Six deals with hours of operation. Seven prohibits specific uses for this development. Eight limits building height to no more than two stories. And nine deals with access. The staff evaluated 16 items from the Focus 2030 comprehensive plan. We found six of those items to be in compliance. There were two out of compliance, and there are a few that the planning commission should consider for compliance, the first being LU 1.1.3. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible, including the building orientation, proposed signage, and location of parking. Next, LU 2, which deals with quality of development and character of the area. LU 2.8 and 281, which deal with the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. The two items we've noted not to be in compliance are LU 214 and NCR 1.1.6, since the applicants did not address tree preservation. On page seven, a couple of additional items, HN1 and HN1.3, which deal with compatibility and character of the area. And last, our economic development items, ED1 and ED3, are there for your consideration. Jumping back to page one, we'll wrap up with a few points to consider. Number one, the application does not comply with the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan relating to signage. And two, the application does not comply with the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan regarding the location of parking. A majority of recent applications approved by the planning commission in the same focal point have met the recommended parking standard, and the planning commission should determine if lack of compliance with this item is appropriate for the focal point. And then the last two items deal with preservation of trees and also building orientation. It is my understanding from an email that I received from the applicant's council that they plan to address those two items this evening. That is all for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, any questions for our staff?
Rachel, I see that we did not, and I'm assuming because it's already done, but we did not note anything about lighting. Is that because it's already done in the ordinance?
Yeah, there's a standard for commercial parking areas and commercial uses in the ordinance that deals with lighting.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is the applicant here or their representative?
Good evening. Chris Davenport, 921 College, swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Ms. Sony, who's present. I'll just have her stand up there, recognize herself. So as Rachel mentioned, there were two in an email this morning. Tried to address two things here that I will offer that Ms. Sony will, when I'm done here, come up and swear to. In DPC number two, when we submitted this, the staff had some questions about, if you read that, any structure adjacent to Russellville Road shall be oriented to face Russellville Road. The intent was to meet that Walnut Valley Focal Point she mentioned. What staff pointed out in their report is that technically, structure under the ordinance would include that fuel canopy, which would then exempt the building behind it from having to orient to Russellville Road. That's not the intent. So the way I think that we address that is to revise number two to say, and this was partly suggested by staff, and then I've tweaked it a little bit too, but to say, quote, "Primary structures excluding fuel canopies adjacent to Russellville Road shall be oriented to face Russellville Road." The reason I've included adjacent to that, the intention of that is if ultimately when this property is developed, it's developed without this orientation of buildings. So these two buildings sit parallel to each other, to the road. And what I suggested to Ms. Hurt is if, and this is from what my engineer's saying, that the property does have some potential for the buildings not to be parallel to Russellville Road but perpendicular. And if that were to be the case, I don't think the focal point would require the rear building to orient to Russellville Road. It might, but it wouldn't have to. And so the ultimate effect of what I'm offering would be that if the development is built as the concept shows, both of those buildings would have to orient to Russellville Road because both would be adjacent to the road as primary structures. The fuel canopy would not exempt the building behind it from orienting. I hope I haven't thoroughly confused everybody. Ms. Hurt and I, we tried, we exchanged some language on that. I think ultimately I would suggest that that meets the requirement of the focal point. The second thing that we will offer, and this will be a DPC number 10, the developer shall make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees, not within building envelopes, vehicular movement or parking areas, and/or areas of utility placement. And the foliage that does exist on the property is, you can see, almost exclusively on the perimeter. So because of building setbacks and so forth, that would, I believe, the majority of that healthy vegetation would be secured and preserved with that DPC. Before I have Ms. Sony get sworn in and testify to those, let me address, I think the other thing that's really kind of standing out there that Rachel noted is the 50% of parking behind the front building, and the fact that our proposal does not require that, and our concept would not comply with that. I can have Jace Caldwell, the engineer, speak to this if you like, but essentially Jace tells me that because of the stormwater pattern on Russellville Road in this area, the stormwater will have to be treated on the front part of the lot. And if you were to comply with the Walnut Valley Focal Point that she's talking about, you would have to move your buildings up closer to the frontage in those areas that have more of the stormwater issues. Much harder to deal with that if you've got footers and a building sitting in that area. It's easier to handle if that's where your parking is. So we are going to, we are asking tonight that you basically acknowledge that from an engineering standpoint, and that focal point doesn't really make sense on this parcel. Rachel noted a majority of the applications that have been brought in that area do comply with that policy. I've had a number of them the last few years, but not all of them do. Sometimes there's certain, unique to a piece of property that just doesn't let that make sense, and that's the case with this property. If you want to hear more from Jace, he's here tonight, and he can explain that further. Other than that, obviously, this is flume compliant. We're not here on a flume night, so you know this is flume compliant. And given the area, I think that the general business makes a lot of sense. There's, in the area, there's HB immediately adjacent to it. We know GB is less intense than HB. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I'm happy to have Ms. Sony come up and swear to those revisions.
Chris, I have a question, and I appreciate your comments, but we do have the Walnut Valley Focal Point, and if we change this, whether it's stormwater or whatever, then the next person that comes in can do what they choose to do. Would you agree with that?
Well, that's the slippery slope argument, Chair Warren, and that argument is as strong as the grounds it's supported with it. And what I mean by that is, and again, I will rely upon what Jace says. There's really no reason from the owner's standpoint to put the parking in the front if it will work in the back. I don't know of any reason. I don't know why that's advantageous for the owner. So my response to that would be... So, my response to that would be, if I'm here next week, or a month from now, or someone else is standing at this podium, and they suggest, well, Ms. Sony, she didn't comply with that when she brought her case before this commission, I would think the operative question would be, well, what's the issue with that other piece of land that makes that compliance either impractical or impossible? You know, I mean, I do appreciate the slippery slope argument, but it is, in this case, it's not a pretextual distinction that I'm suggesting.
Well, it's not necessarily a slippery slope, but maybe this project is not the right project for this piece of property.
Just bear in mind, Commissioner, that policy applies to all development.
I agree, hundred percent.
And this is, what I would suggest is, I'm sorry, I don't have the acreage in front of me. It's a three point three acre, what I would consider an infill project that sits on a major artery in our community.
Jace, would you come to the microphone, please?
Jace Caldwell. Oh, I don't remember the new address he changed, at ten fifteen Shive Lane, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Swear to tell the truth, Jace.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Jace, I mean, so can the building be scooted up to the front?
I mean, it's physically possible, yes. I had originally just said that. I think we all know Russellville Road has a little bit more drainage problems than other areas. And I have done a study of that area for the church on the other side of the field to the right of it, trying to address some of those issues, some of the issues that don't apply in most Warren County. And so, when this project was brought to me, having that knowledge, that was just my suggestion, was if we can keep the buildings away from that and be able to slope the parking lot down to that, not deal with it right next to the buildings, that'd be ideal. But that was my suggestion. So, that wasn't anything to do with owners, that was all on me.
No, I see.
Thank you, Jace. Commissioners, any other questions for Jace? All right. Chris, before you come back up just a minute, is there anyone in the audience that has a comment or a question, other than the applicants, regarding this proposal? Yes, ma'am, if you would come to the microphone, please. Your name and address?
Emily Sharp, sixty-one seventy-six Russellville Road.
Ms. Sharp, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I am, if you're looking at it, we're the far corner on the left side, looking straight ahead. The water issues on Russellville Road are extreme and increasing. This lot floods all across the front. The lot next to it, where the apartments are going in, there've been drilling and drilling and drilling, trying to resolve the flooding there. The field next to it floods. My neighbor to the left of them, or right going out, their lot floods with a heavy rain all the way to their house, and an acre lot that's vacant. Our driveway and our cattle field. Directly behind this, we have a cattle field. We have a large sinkhole that does not show up on the maps, and I've talked with stormwater people about that. I have real concerns about where the drainage is going to go on this lot. I'm encouraged that they're considering leaving the trees, because we do have cattle. The noise, the light, the trees, and the existing fencing, which is not necessarily on the property line, is a natural deterrent. We were able to, when the property next door, we were able to get some additional fencing by the applicant, when it was approved a few years ago. And that helps us keep cattle in, and it helps dogs and people from wandering over. My biggest concern is the drainage. And I see nothing here that would indicate to me that they're going to be able to control that with the parking in the front. If they put a storage tank and underground gas tank storage, it's on big sinkholes, the whole lot, the front half of the lot, if you look at the GIS map, the sinkholes and wetlands. And I'm not as opposed to the zoning change as I am this particular design for this particular... The Walnut Valley, I was on the twenty thirty plan, planning. It was designed primarily, in my understanding, this side of the road would be residential, whether it's multifamily, single-family. It's not, in my mind, compliant with the local Walnut Valley plan, sorry, either from a compatibility standpoint. I don't see that we need it lined with convenience stores. We have Hucks, we have Minutemark, we have, on the other end of that, the IGA, and I know their plans for more along there. I think we do want to preserve the character, and I think that this project, as it's shown, is not the correct one for there.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Appreciate your comments. So, we've heard about water issues, and Ms. Sharp, any engineering, wherever the building would sit, would sit if this were to go forward, and their representatives will tell you, they have to contain their own water, so they cannot be pushed on somebody else, just FYI. But we've talked about flooding, the mature tree line, the lack of fencing. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a different comment regarding this proposal? All right, Mr. Davenport?
I'm going to have Ms. Sony come up in just a minute, but I'm going to add a third revision, and Jace says that I fought hard enough for him, so he's going to have me give up the fight. The third one will be that a minimum of fifty percent of all required parking shall be to the rear of the front building line. That will absolutely comply with that policy. He says it will be a little tougher on him, but he'll be up for it. So, did the best I could, Jace.
You did.
All right. So, with that, I'd like for Ms. Sony to come up, if that pleases the commission.
Yes, ma'am, if you would come forward. Yes, ma'am, if you would state your name and address, please.
Bina eight three two, oh, Russellville Road. Sorry, just a second. Okay, eight three, five eight three six Russellville Road, Bina Sony.
Are you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Davenport?
Thank you. Ms. Sony, did you hear the three conditions that I read to the commission? I'm going to read them again, okay? That "Any primary structures excluding fuel canopies adjacent to Russellville Road shall be oriented to face Russellville Road." That's the first one. The second one, "The developer," which is you, "shall make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees, not within building envelopes, vehicular movement or parking areas, and/or areas of utility placement." And number three, "That a minimum of fifty percent of all required parking shall be to the rear of the front building line." Do you agree to those development conditions?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, thank you, Chris. So, Mr. Moore, we've got those development plan conditions.
I'm recording.
All right, thank you very much. So, commissioners would call for a motion regarding this zoning map amendment, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-two seventy-eight ZBG. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Chair Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Oh, ma'am. The motion is approved, and will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-two seventy-nine Z County Wheat Land Development Care of Darren Wheat has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately two point two six acres located at one eight one Dillard Road from Ag to general business with a general development plan. And if this motion is approved, Wheat Land Development Care of Darren Wheat has applied for a variance from the required building setback adjacent to a residential use in general business zone, to allow the setback to be thirty-five feet along the southwest property line of the property at one eight one Dillard Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on February the tenth for the property that you mentioned, and that is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is agriculture. The current land use is commercial. And the future land use is mixed-use residential. As you mentioned, the applicants are looking to rezone from agriculture to general business in order to continue operation of the office and administrative use for a contractor-related business. And they are requesting a variance from a forty-foot building setback adjacent to residential use in a GB zone. So, the applicants did supply a couple of different exhibits for you to review. There is a zone change exhibit, and then additionally, there is a exhibit for the variance too, that reflects that request, so you can review that. Looking over at the site characteristics review, this application complies with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review, except for the front yard setback adjacent to a single-family residential use, for which the applicant has requested a variance. The site design and compatibility review, the application complies with majority of the items assessed on the site design and compatibility review section. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Looking down at the general development plan conditions, number one addresses the, all utilities will be located underground. Number two, the property shall have no direct access to Nashville Road, so long as the property is being used in its current state, with the existing structures, it shall have no more than two existing access points onto Dillard Road. If at any point in the future the property is developed with new or additional structures, it shall be limited to no more than one access point onto Dillard Road, a design and location of which shall be approved by Warren County Public Works. Number three, has prohibited uses for the property. Number four, so long as the existing structure remains on the property, its general appearance shall be maintained. Measures will be taken to bring the existing structure into compliance with applicable building codes. Number five addresses orientation of any new building. Number six addresses building material of any new building. Number seven, no structure on the property shall exceed two stories in height. Number eight, the property shall have a maximum of one monument-style sun, which will not exceed twenty feet in height, or fifty square feet in area of sun face. Number nine addresses the tree preservation. Number ten, the property shall include a minimum of twenty-five percent open space. Number eleven, hours of operation shall be limited to six AM to eleven PM. And number twelve addresses sinkholes. Did I skim over? No, I did not. I'm sorry, I thought I missed something. Looking back at the Focus 2030 category review, staff reviewed thirteen items, and I'll highlight four of them for your consideration. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area, if the proposed variance is appropriate from the adjacent residential use, and it complies with LU one point one point three. The proposal may comply with LU two. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is high-quality development, that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The proposal may comply with HN one and HN one point three. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible infill development, that will maintain or improve existing character and pattern of development within the area. And the proposal may comply with ED one and ED three. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposed development will help to diversify the local economy, and if it supports the antenor endeavors. Moving on to the variance portion of the application, there we have the zoning ordinance reference for the additional setback adjacent to a single-family residential district, structure, or use. The applicant is requesting a five-foot variance from the required forty-foot building setback adjacent to a single-family residential use that is located within the southwestern property line, and that will allow the existing structure to remain thirty-five feet off of the southwestern property line. There we have the variance findings for granting a variance. The applicants did supply a narrative to help address those, and the Planning Commission should consider if the applicant has adequately addressed the findings required for granting a variance. Looking back to the points to consider, if the applicants are approved, the applicant will be permitted to continue operation of the office and administrative use for contractor-related business, which are not permitted in the current zone. This is the first step in achieving compliance for the code enforcement process. And if the applicants are approved, the applicant will have to receive proper permits through the county to ensure compliance with commercial building codes. Will have to connect the existing structures, structure to sewer, and install required landscaping on the property for the existing vehicle use area along a common property line with the adjacent single use. So, that is all we have for the staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for our staff report?
Ask about the variance yet? Why are they asking for the five-foot difference in variance to go to thirty-five instead of forty? Do you know?
To be thirty-five, the five-foot variance, there's a forty-foot setback for general, for the proposed zoning for general business there, next to a single-family residential structure. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you very much. Is the applicant here, or their representative?
Chairman Warren, Tad Pardue, ten ten College Street, swear to tell the truth. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I represent the applicant, which is Wheat Land Development LLC. Just by way of introduction, that is Darren Wheat, gentleman right here that just raised his hand. Darren owns the company. Darren, last December, was displaced because of the tornado. He owns Infinity Pipeline, which is a family-owned utility contractor here in town, and was allowed to move his administrative offices, or given the opportunity to move his administrative offices to this location, when it was owned by another individual and began operating in January, only to learn shortly thereafter, it wasn't allowed, it was zoned agricultural. So, as the staff report mentions, this application, if it's granted, would essentially be the first step into bringing Mr. Wheat and his company into compliance with the zoning ordinance. As to Ms. Drain, Commissioner Drain's question about the variance, that is correct. The offices are being used in the existing location, what used to be a home on the property, and it is situated to where it's thirty-five feet from the neighboring property, which is a single-family use. I will mention this only for what it's worth, but it's my understanding that today, an application to rezone was filed by that neighboring property owner, seeking to rezone that property from agricultural to general business, just as is being proposed here. So, I guess you could say, or conceivably, were we a little more patient and let them go first, and theirs was approved, we may not need the variance. But that is, that's the reason for the variance, and it is a five-foot variance request. The only other thing I would mention, unless the commissioners have any questions, or if there's opposition we need to address, is this... is this proposal is fully compliant completely. You'll notice that we prohibited a considerable number of uses that would otherwise be allowed in general business. And it does, if you look at the zoning map and the existing land use map, sort of follow a pattern of development along Nashville Road as it goes south from town out to the Bridge Pond area. There is, at this very intersection, property that is zoned general business. And just a short distance up the road north, on the same side of the road, is a development that this board approved less than two years ago that features a general business component at Nashville Road and a multifamily component behind it. So based on those factors, it does clearly appear to us to be compatible with surrounding developments. And again, unless the commissioners have any questions of us, myself, or Mr. Wheat this evening, I don't have anything else to add. We appreciate your consideration.
Commissioners?
Ted, and I assume it's safe to say that, just like on Cemetery Road, it'll be their vehicles parked there.
They are.
I mean, no large, just the pickups and the SUVs and stuff like that.
That is correct. And that's actually a conversation, Commissioner Volker, that we had with County Public Works when coming up with the development plan conditions. And that's actually a reason why there were some specific uses that were prohibited is that we did not want commercial vehicles coming in and out of the property.
Thank you, Ted. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Pardue? Thank you, Ted. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or a comment? Yes, ma'am, if you would come to the microphone. State your name and address, please.
The name is Deborah Jenkins and I live at five sixteen Dillard Road.
Ms. Jenkins, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just a few comments on this, because I know this area is a ton of growth. A couple of differences, I think, on this is, one, you have additional pavement, concrete pad, and dumpsters that were added without any permits trying to move this, and that's kind of what pushed this. I don't think if they would have been out of zone, or if they wouldn't have been a code enforcement issue, this wouldn't be before you today. So that's kind of what prompted this to come. If you, when you look at the future, I'm sorry, the existing land use on, I believe it's page ten, and you see the commercial properties that was referenced. Every piece of commercial property through here connects directly with Nashville Road. This one, the parking is on Dillard Road. Dillard Road is an off-corridor road. It is a grandfathered-in road. It doesn't even meet county current road requirements. It's only a nineteen-foot road. We've already had issues on that road. They built a summit next to it. Not long ago, they approved another forty acres for more homes. That'll be eighty-four. They're at Dillard in Bettersworth. So it's very much neighborhood, very much turning into residential all along that corridor. My concern is that this, this is not going on that main Nashville Road. It might be facing it. All the access is on Dillard Road, which is an already stressed road. They're using existing residential drives. This isn't a park, they don't have, you know, business parking lot when you've got, you know, twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred trucks. They may not be the massive dump trucks, the large containers, but, you know, none of them are using residential driveways as their business parking lot like this one is. With it being a construction company, I'm concerned about dumpsters. That was one of the things. If you guys had pictures from probably before when they took, and they probably have, there's a large, commercial-sized dumpster that was placed right at the roadway, right onto Dillard Road. So when you turn on that road, all you see dumpster right at the residence. They were, they had to remove that as part of it, I believe, because it was quickly gone. But the things that were set up, it's kind of been, the restrictions are coming in after the fact. So once you go to general business, especially since the connection, it's not on Nashville Road. It's on a side corridor, fully residential road that doesn't even meet county. I mean, it's a grandfathered-in. We had issues with it before with it, the alligatoring of the road where it starts to break apart. So it's really not set up to be have entrance and exit of commercial-type business on that road. It's doing good to hold up with just the residential traffic that's coming on the road. So those are kind of the main concerns that we have because intentions do change. They may have an intention, hey, at this point, we're not going to do this. But once you change it to general business, you open that box. You talk about kind of the trickle-down effect. Well, once it becomes that, then they sell the property, what happens to it next? They decide they need to move heavier equipment there. You know, what are kind of the protections in there? Because this is the main way that high school kids, all of them, anyone that lives in that summit area that lives in the new one that's going there. I believe the Warren County School System is trying to put an elementary school back further in there. So there's, there's a whole lot of young kids, school buses, of that thing that's already kind of stressing it. So when you start adding business traffic to it, it just, the road's not, not made for it.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate you being here tonight. We heard from Ms. Jenkins the issues of the road width and the coming out onto Dillard Road versus Nashville Road and the traffic patterns. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a comment regarding this proposed request? Or commissioners, any other, any other comments? Mr. Pardue, any closing comments, please?
Ted, you know, I asked a few minutes ago about the vehicles there. And from what I remember, at Cemetery Road, there was anywhere from three to six at a time parked in front of the house on Cemetery Road. Is that still the same intentions?
It is, Commissioner, and I will, and I'm glad you brought that up because I did want to have just a brief moment to address this. That issue, issue of the condition and width of Dillard Road was fully explored leading up to this application with Warren County Public Works. Hence, the quite substantial list of prohibited uses. And the understanding was, and it was made abundantly clear from Public Works, that if there were going to be any commercial vehicles coming in and out of this property, that there were going to need to be improvements to Dillard Road at that intersection with Nashville Road. So working with Public Works, we came up with and comprised a list of uses that might envision or contemplate the use of commercial vehicles. And then we put all of those in the development plan conditions as being prohibited. And obviously, as you all know, if, you know, the process to amend a development plan involves the public hearing process. And if that issue were to arise in the future, then I would envision, obviously, that having to come before you all with County Public Works being in the loop and saying, hey, if you're, if you're going to want to amend these conditions and allow these uses, you're going to have to do A, B, C, and D to Dillard Road to improve it. And then I'll mention this lastly. Understanding that, that the business has been operating out of compliance. It has been there operating since January. So we're in, you know, nine, ten months and there's, you know, nothing different proposed about the use as an administrative office moving forward, provided that this is approved. Then there has been on the property for the last nine or ten months.
But Ted, where, to answer the, to answer Mrs. Jenkins' question, where, on the general development plan conditions, where does it state that this would be, quote-unquote, "office use only"?
I point to DPC three, the list of prohibited uses. And I don't have the use table from the zoning ordinance in front of me, but this eliminates group living, healthcare, restaurant, with or without drive-through, hotel, motel, vehicle sales, school, commercial parking lot. I don't have the use table in front of me, but I, and so I can't quote how many other uses there are in a general business zone that would be permitted besides those. But I can't imagine there are many other than the use that's currently being on the property. Everybody's looking at Rachel. I know she does.
It wouldn't, I guess Ted's correct in saying that they have prohibited a substantial number of uses. And those were directly requested by Warren County Public Works in review of this application. So it wouldn't limit the use only to office. It could still allow limited retail or things that would be deemed to be low-traffic generators as far as the intensity of the use of the property is concerned.
Just a general question, what would keep them, in no disrespect to their business, but parking tri-axle dump trucks on this lot?
That would not be permitted in the zone. Contractor-related businesses are allowed in general business, but only if the use is more office-leaning in that they wouldn't be able to store or park equipment or materials or supplies on the property. And that's just a requirement of the zoning that they're asking for.
Thank you very much.
I mean, they'd have, there'd be a code enforcement issue.
Be a code issue at that point.
Right.
So the dumpster issue, was that just a one-time thing of him needing a commercial-sized dumpster, or?
It was a code issue, and I believe once it was brought to the property owner's attention, it was removed. It was removed or screened. I can't remember exactly. Rachel probably remembers more about it than me.
It was removed. The original dumpster that was there was enclosed and screened. But at the time, it was still not permitted under the zone and they were trying to address as many of the code compliance issues as they could at the time, and it was removed. However, if this were to move forward and they wanted to place a dumpster back on the property, they could do so in compliance with the ordinance and as, as the ordinance would require it to be properly screened.
But we're talking, we're not talking about a construction dump.
Your administrative offices.
Yeah, and we're not talking about bringing materials in and dumping them on, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pardue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Commissioners?
Just one question, it's, I guess, for Rachel. I'm not really maybe supposed to ask her a question, but the only other use in general business would be a multifamily. Would that be, that is not addressed, so I just wanted to bring that up as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Pardue, Ms. Jenkins. So would call for a motion, our first motion would be to rezone this tract of land at one eight-one Dillard Road.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan docket number twenty-two-two seventy-nine ZCO. Based on the testimony and the documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain.
Oh, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Call for a motion, please, on the variance at one eight-one Dillard Road.
I make the motion to approve the request for the variance at one eight-one Dillard Road, docket number twenty-two-two V twenty-one. A variance of five feet to allow the existing building to be located thirty-five feet from the adjacent single-family residential use. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that granting this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general facility, and will not cause hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not cause unreasonable circumstances of requirements of the zoning regulation.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion to approve the zoning recommendation goes to Warren County Fiscal Court. And the variance is the planning commission's final action. Our next item tonight is twenty-two-two eighty-one ZBG SMP Properties LLC and Weston Apartments LLC have filed an application to rezone portions of a tract of land containing approximately ten point five acres located in northwest portion of the roundabout at Southwest Parkway and Kobe Way from agriculture and RM three townhouse multifamily residential to RM four multifamily residential with a general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on June the third for the property that you mentioned and that is highlighted in yellow there. The current zoning is agriculture and RM three. Current land use is agriculture. And the future land use is mixed-use commercial. As you mentioned, the applicants are looking to, to rezone in order to develop a maximum of three hundred and sixteen units on the properties. The applicants did supply, I think, a couple of exhibits in your packet for you to review. Looking over at the site characteristics review, down to the natural features, there are known sinkholes on one of the properties. There is a mature tree line running through the central portion of one of the properties. And the applicants did, the applicants did not agree to preserve any of the existing vegetation. Looking over site design and compatibility review, building materials review. This is, is located in the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. And that encourages setting standards for quality development in the Focal Point area by establishing minimum design standards. Proposed DPC number five incorporates vinyl siding as a permitted building material for up to fifty percent of the structures excluding soffits. The DPCs for the most recently approved multifamily development in the area at five-four-six-three Resteville Road limits vinyl to a maximum of twenty-five percent of the exterior. Looking down at the proposed open space, the maximum allowable lot coverage in RM four zone is eighty-five percent, meaning at least fifteen percent of development will contain open space. We refer to WV two E and LU two point one point one below for regarding additional recommendations for open space. The application as submitted does not comply with a twenty percent minimum open space recommendation per WV dash two E and does not incorporate any amenities such as walking trail, dog park, outdoor pavilion, or pool. So in summary, the application complies with a majority of the items regarding site design with considerations noting regarding allowable percentage of vinyl and open space. Looking at the traffic impact study, over on page four, a traffic impact study was not required by the Bowling Green Public Works Department. Bowling Green Public Works did not request any improvements relating to the portion of the properties proposed to be rezoned. The applicants generally agreed to limit the development to one entrance via the Southwest Parkway and DPC number nine. Looking at the area-specific policy review, again, this is located within the boundary of the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan, and I will just highlight a few policies. WV dash two A, residential development should be compatible with the adjacent land uses. New development should not exceed the overall density of the adjacent development by more than fifty percent. The proposed density for this development is twenty point five, five-seven dwelling units per acre. densities for existing and approved subdivisions and developments range from one point one zero to twenty point nine dwelling units per acre. And the planning commission should determine if compliance, should determine compliance with this policy. And then looking down at WV dash two E, again, that addresses the open space that we, we mentioned earlier. And so I won't touch on, on that, on that again. Looking over at the development plan conditions, number one, the property shall not Looking over at the development plan conditions, number one, the property shall not exceed 216 dwelling units. Number two, a minimum of 50% of the development's parking shall be located to the rear of the front building lines of the buildings nearest Kobe Way and Southwest Parkway. No parking shall be located within the front building setbacks. Number three, addresses screening. Number four, no building shall exceed three stories. All structures shall be uniform design and color. Number five, addresses building materials. Number six, the development shall be under singular ownership and management. Number seven, the development shall have uniform lighting for parking and vehicular movement areas. Number eight, development shall contain internal sidewalks of at least three feet in width. Number nine, the development shall be served by no more than one access point, which shall be via the Southwest Parkway. Number 10, utilities shall be underground. And number 11, addresses sinkholes. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, staff reviewed 20 items, and I'll highlight seven of those for your consideration. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area, including the allowable percentage of vinyl, and it complies with LU1.1.3. The proposal may comply with LU2 if the Planning Commission deems the proposal to be high-quality development, that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The minimum amount of open space required in the proposed RM4 zoning is 15, and so the proposal generally does not comply with LU2.1. The applicants, however, are proposing three put sidewalks internal to the development. Planning Commission should determine compliance with LU2.8, 2.8.1. The proposal complies with three of the recommendations from the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan, does not comply with one of the recommendations. Compliance with one of the recommendations should be determined by the Planning Commission. The proposal does not comply with LU2.1.4, PR1.7, NCR, and NCR1.1.6. The applicants did not address preservation of any of the existing vegetation. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal complies with HN1 and HN1.3, and if the proposed development is compatible and improves or maintains the existing character of the area. And then the Planning Commission should determine if it complies with HN2.1 and HN4, if the location of the proposed residences is suitable, and if the proposed development will increase housing variety in Warren County. Looking back at the points to consider, proposed DPC number five incorporates vinyl siding as a permitted building material for up to 50% of the structures. DPCs for the most recently approved multifamily development in the area limits vinyl to a maximum of 25% of the exterior. Zoning ordinance requires RM4 development to incorporate a minimum of 15% open space, which is less than 20% minimum recommended for, recommended for properties in the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. And the applicants did not agree to provide anything more than the minimum of 15%. The DPCs as submitted did not account for any additional open space with the proposed development, nor are they, nor are there any open space amenities such as walking trail, dog park, outdoor pavilion, or pool that are proposed. The applicants did not agree to preserve any of the existing vegetation that is located on the site. And I do believe the applicants do plan to address a few of these points to consider, so after the, after the staff report was, was put together. So, that is all we have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this point? Okay. Is the applicant here, or their representative?
Mr. Davenport, Commissioners, on behalf of SMP Properties, and I still swear to tell the truth. SMP Properties are represented by Clay and Travis Pendleton, if y'all raise your hands, so they'll be, be here when we need them. Amy's right that I want to suggest that they agree to a minimum of 25% open space. In working with our engineer, Brian Shirley, we've, we've got, we're confident that that can be met with the number of the units. And secondly, they will agree to make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees, not within building envelopes, vehicular movement, or parking areas, and/or areas of utility placement. That being said, I will admit to you all that there aren't a lot of trees on this property. Where you, where you will find trees, Rachel, is the laser up here? Thank you. Or right here in this fence row, and I think to say they're modest would probably be an accurate statement. And for reasons I'll get into in a minute, I, I should not tell, expect a lot of those to be preserved. I don't think they'll be able to be, but we will agree to that. We'll do our best to save what we can. What the other side of this story is, I want to make you all aware of, is my clients also own this adjoining parcel. That's another 10-acre tract. That's zoned RM3 without any development conditions. So when you looked on your density map, one of these parcels, I think it's here, maybe, somewhere in here, there's a 20.9 density development. That's not this one. It's very close to it, but this actually has no cap on it. So their existing tract, they can develop it consistent with RM3 standards, no conditions. That's what that current property is zoned as. Their intention will be ultimately likely to develop these properties together. Okay? So the RM3, the existing RM3 tract that could be designed to RM3 standards would allow for two stories. What they're asking for tonight, this tract would be allowed up to three stories, and then ultimately, it's likely these properties will connect right in here. The reason I point that out is, when Amy mentions that in our development, we don't have any amenities, we don't have any amenities in our condition, they absolutely intend to do that, but they really don't know where, on which track those are going to go. And I explained to them, if we commit in this application to those amenities on this tract of land, you will not satisfy that condition if they go over here, if that makes sense.
So are you saying that you are not going to commit to amenities on this track?
With this application, I can't do it because I don't know where they're going to go, Commissioner Volker.
It's too many units for no amenities.
Well, I'll talk to them.
I mean, you, you know that. I mean, we can't do 216 units with no amenities.
Well, see, I mean, I think there's a clubhouse on here somewhere, Brian told me already. I guess that's this building right here, so.
And what about the 25 and 50% vinyl?
Well, again, the adjoining tract has no.
We're not talking about the adjoining tract.
I understand that, Commissioner Volker. But the idea is to have these products complement each other.
Sure, so, so we got to fix this one first. And they'll, because they'll want to come back at an RM4, not an RM3.
They don't intend to rezone the next.
Well, but they might.
Well, I mean, I, I can't preclude that. That's correct.
That's why we can't talk about the other tract tonight.
That's correct. So the application states 50% because the intention across the street, or not across the street, but the adjoining parcel, the two stories, the intention was 50%. If the Commissioner would like me to discuss something different with them, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I think so.
I think, I think we need to hear about the, the 25% on the vinyl, and we need to hear about the amenities.
With that, I don't think I had anything else I wanted to point out. I wanted to clarify the open space and the tree issue, although as I concede, the tree issues, there's not much there there.
Keep what you can.
Yeah.
Okay, let me ask this before you talk to your, to your, the owners. Is there anyone in the opposition, in, in the audience tonight that has questions regarding this proposal, or comments? All right, hearing, Mr. Davenport, if you would talk with your clients and address these matters.
Beteed, I won't be long. number five. The exterior of no structure shall exceed 25% vinyl siding coverage excluding soffits.
50, delete, AR25.
Yes, sir. Let's just do a number 12. The development shall include a clubhouse and community pool. And then I'd be happy to get either Mr. Pendleton up here to swear to those.
The other one was you have already changed the open space to 25%.
Yeah, and Chair Warren, I'm not sure, I didn't delineate where I would put that, so.
It would probably be at number 13.
Yeah, let's just do 13. Development shall include a minimum of, what'd I say, 25%? Yeah, 25% open space. And we'll do number 14 will be the, the tree preservation, and I'll read that again for Mr. Pendleton.
Okay, so Hamp, we got those?
Sir, I think so.
All right, Commissioners, before we call either one of the brothers up here, are there any other questions? We all understand the amendment and the DPCs and the new DPCs that have been added. Okay, so Mr. Davenport, if you call.
Key Pendleton will do.
Hello, my name's Clay Pendleton, 1470 Mount Air Circle. I agree to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Clay, did you hear those revised conditions that I've read?
Yes, sir.
I want to read them to you again, that you'll have a minimum of 25% open space, that you will make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees, not within building envelopes, vehicular movement area, movement or parking areas, and/or areas of utility placement, that you will, that the development, no structure shall exceed 25% vinyl siding exclusive of soffits, and that the development shall include a clubhouse and community pool.
Yes, sir.
And do you agree to those?
Yes, sir.
And will you sign those revised conditions when I present them to you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, if we would call for a motion, please, with the new, as the new DPCs have been presented.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 2022-81ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adoptive Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Dren.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approved and goes to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Our next, does anybody need to take a break, or are we ready to keep going?
Let's roll.
Okay. Our next item tonight is 2022-82Z County. SVJG Development has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 30.97 acres located at 5617 Louisville Road from Ag to RM4 multifamily residential and highway business with a general development plan.
Thank you, sir. We had a pre-application meeting back in August for the property you just mentioned at 5617 Louisville Road, currently zoned agriculture with a use also of agriculture. The future land use map is mixed-use commercial with a small chunk of high-density residential in the back right corner. And we will jump to the site plan and look at the site characteristics review. Just a couple of things we'll touch on in this section. The first, relating to transportation infrastructure, you can see from the concept plan that the applicants are proposing two main entrances from Louisville Road. KYTC did not prohibit two entrances, but did highly encourage the applicants to utilize only one main entrance to US31W. Looking at the natural features, jump back to the aerial. The property includes numerous mature trees around the front portion of the site near the existing historic home, and there is also an established tree line along portions of the southwestern property line, and the applicants did not agree to preserve any of the existing trees that are located on the property. Below that, we've noted that a large portion of the property is designated as prime farm land, and also portions primeland, a prime farm land of statewide importance. And then, looking at the site design and compatibility review on page three, looking at the surrounding architectural features, this area of Louisville Road is comprised of a mixture of building types, and then they range from one to two stories in height. The applicants are proposing a maximum building height of three stories for the RM4 portion of the development, which would be the larger portion of the development to the rear here. Let me jump back to the site plan. Looking at open space, the RM4 zone requires a minimum of 15% open space. The concept plan depicts a much greater area than this, but the applicants did not specify any additional open space in their development plan conditions. On page four, we've noted that a traffic impact study was not required. However, KYTC and Warren County Public Works did require a few improvements. The first from KYTC is that a left and right turn lane on Louisville Road would be installed, and again, they highly encouraged that the development contain only one main entrance. If the second entrance is installed, the second entrance shall be right-in, right-out only. And from Warren County Public Works, the proposed roadway, that'd be this central roadway here, would require 60-foot right-of-way and shall include a commercial paving section per the subdivision regulations. Dedicated left and right turn lanes onto US31W from the development entrance are also required, and the developer would need to allow for public turnaround for vehicles entering into the apartments, or for vehicles not entering into the apartments. And the applicants did agree to these requirements in their development plan conditions. We'll look at those now. There are two sets, the front, the first portion we'll go through is for the RM4, the multifamily section. Number one limits the development to 480 dwelling units. Two limits building height to three stories and requires uniform design and color. Three addresses building materials. Four requires singular ownership and management. Five requires uniform lighting. Six requires that the development include a community pool, and that the development contain internal sidewalks that will connect to the sidewalks adjoining the new public road. Seven deals with access. Eight requires new utilities to be located underground, and nine addresses sinkholes. On page five, we have the proposed development plan conditions for the HB portion of the development. Number one limits building height to two stories. Two outlines building materials. Three requires that roof level equipment be screened. Four outlines hours of operation. Five deals with access. Six requires new utilities to be underground. Seven addresses sinkholes. Eight deals with preservation of the existing historic home and rock wall. Nine outlines the public street requirements. Ten addresses signage. Eleven building orientation, and twelve prohibited uses. From the Focus 2030 category review, there are a few items we'll look at for your consideration on the back page, I guess that's page six. So number one, LU1.1.3. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible, including the proposed building height for the RM4 portion of the development. Next, LU2 and 2.1, which look at quality of development and character of the area. Next, LU two and two-point-one, which look at quality of development and character of the area. Next, LU two-point-one-point-one, which deals with open space. And below that, LU two-three-one and TR two-point-one, which deals with access. Next, LU two-five-two, which looks at compatibility with the existing historic home. The next three items are non-compliance, LU two-one-four, PR one-point-seven, NCR one-point-one-point-six. Those deal with preservation of existing vegetation. And then last, HN-one and HN-one-point-three, and HN-two-point-one and HN-four, which look at compatibility, character and pattern of development, suitability of the proposed housing type and housing options. Going to wrap up on page one with points to consider. The first, the maximum building height for existing structures along this stretch of Louisville Road is two stories. The applicants are proposing a maximum height of three stories for the RM four portion of the development. The next two relate to open space and tree preservation, but I believe the applicants are prepared to address those items here in just a bit. And below that, again, KYTC encouraged, highly encouraged only one main entrance to US thirty-one W. However, the applicants are proposing two main entrances. And then last, a large portion of the property is designated as prime farmland with the remainder prime farmland of statewide importance. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you very much. Is the applicant here or their representative?
A busy week. Chris Davenport, nine-twenty-one College, and I swear to tell the truth. I'm here on behalf of SVJG. Mr. John Groves is present. And I guess carrying on with the theme, there are two DPCs that I need to offer on his behalf. The first, which will be number... Thirteen? No, that's the HB. Well, actually, it needs to go in the RM three. Yeah, so number ten. The development shall include no less than thirty-five percent open space. Which I think compares pretty well with the fifteen percent minimum in the ordinance. And then number eleven, the developer shall make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees, not within building envelopes, vehicular movement areas, and/or areas of utility placement. With that, before he does that, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have. I don't really have a whole lot to add to what Rachel presented. Except I'll say this. I think personally, I'm happy to see some development up US thirty-one W. It's probably not a coincidence, given the recent announcements that we have with industry in that area. Originally, I think you were going to hear two developments in Bristow tonight. One of them's going to be postponed, so I think you're starting to see that. I think it's wise and frankly, it's consistent with the flume and the planning y'all had in place for a while now.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport? Thank you, Chris. Would you call Mr. Groves up and agree to the development plan conditions?
John Groves, six-oh-three Pine Court, Bowling Green.
Swear to tell the truth, John.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
John, did you hear those two? And by the way, Rachel, you wanted the mature trees in the RM four DPC, correct?
Around the main house.
You want, do you want them both?
They weren't addressed for either portion.
Yeah.
Did the initial review, I think when you added it just in the RM four.
When you added them in the RM four area, I think that would cover some of the perimeter vegetation. But then in the HB area, there are several mature trees around the existing home.
So, John, I'm going to ask you, do you agree that the RM four will have a minimum of thirty-five percent open space?
Yes.
And in both the RM four and in the HB, do you agree to make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees, not within building envelopes, vehicular movement areas, and/or areas of utility placement?
Yes.
And in the RM, in the HB, that will be number thirteen? Did I remember that right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I forgot, I'm sorry, it's getting late. Did I ask if there's anyone in the audience tonight had a question about this?
I'll bet.
Yes.
I don't recall that you did yet.
We'll ask it right now. Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment or question? All right, thank you very much. All right, so Commissioners, you've heard to the new DPCs. Would call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty-two-two-eight-two Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comp Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Furthermore, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drenn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is twenty-two-two-eight-three Z County, Bristow Partners, and it has been postponed to our November third meeting. Am I saying that correct?
You said it correctly, but I think you need a motion to adjourn, recess the hearing.
Need a motion to recess instead of postpone to November third, either way.
I make a motion to recess till November third.
At thirty PM in this building.
Second.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drenn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw. Chair Warren.
Ma'am. Motion to postpone or to delay or whatever we're doing to November third has been approved. Our last item tonight is twenty-two-eight-four ZBG. M.A. Williams Properties, care of Mark Williams, has filed an application to Arizona tract to Arizona tract of land containing approximately nine acres located southwest corner of Fields Drive and Jefferson Court from RM two, two-family residential to RM three townhouse multifamily residential and RM three townhouse multifamily residential to RM three townhouse multifamily residential with a general development plan.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in August for the property you just referenced, located on Fields Drive. Jefferson Court runs alongside the property as well. The current zoning is split RM two and RM three with a use of agriculture and vacant. And the future land use designation is high-density residential. Looking at the site characteristics review, we'll touch on a couple of items. First, we've noted that there's a mature line of trees around portions of perimeter property lines and that a large portion of the north end of the development area contains mature trees, and the applicant did not agree to preserve any of the existing trees. We would also like to touch on the flood plains and wetlands section. You'll see on the exhibit here, the hatched area is currently designated as flood plain. And this will require an amendment through FEMA prior to any development in any of these flood plain designated areas. There are also a few lots that front Yuma Drive and drawn them away that are... If we go back to the map, you can see those properties down here, kind of in this area on the southeast side. So, those currently are known to have flooding issues, and this was discussed during the CDR meeting with the applicant before the application was submitted. During the CDR meeting, the city staff suggested a development plan condition requiring that the drainage plans, when reviewed and approved for this development, address the existing flooding issues for these properties, i.e. net zero or better than existing. This was not addressed by the applicant. Looking at the site design and compatibility review, there are a few items we'll touch on. The first being building orientation. Many of the existing structures along Fields Drive have front facades oriented to face Fields Drive. Side-facing facades incorporate foundation plannings or have some sort of architectural relief along such facade, and the application as submitted does not address building orientation, nor does it incorporate any requirement for architectural relief or screening elements for side or rear-facing facades. Touching on open space, the maximum allowable lot coverage in the proposed RM three zone is eighty percent, meaning at least twenty percent of the development will be set aside as open space. And the applicant did not address any additional open space in their development plan conditions. They did agree to install a clubhouse and pool. Looking at the pedestrian facilities, the applicant has agreed to connect to the existing sidewalks along Fields Drive. The concept plan depicts sidewalks internal to the development at some of the buildings and near the mail kiosk and clubhouse, but there is no specification in the development plan conditions as to the portions of the development that would include sidewalks. Looking at the development plan conditions, number one limits the development to a hundred dwelling units. Two requires a clubhouse and pool. Three sets the maximum building height at two stories. Four outlines building materials. Five requires singular ownership and management. Six requires uniform lighting. Seven requires a pedestrian connection to the existing sidewalks on Fields Drive. And eight requires all new utilities to be located underground. One thing I forgot to mention in number three is that all structures will be uniform in design and color. And then on the next page, nine deals with access and ten addresses sinkholes. We evaluated several items from the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan. The three of those items are out of compliance and nine are for your consideration, the first being LU one-point-one-point-three. Planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible, including building orientation along Fields Drive. LU two deals with quality of development and character of the area. LU two-point-one-point-one addresses open space. The three non-compliant items deal with tree preservation, LU two-one-four, PR one-point-seven, and NCR one-point-one-point-six. Below that, we have reference to NCR one-point-one and one-point-three, which look at the flooding issues that I mentioned previously. Next, HN-one and HN-one-point-three, which deal with compatibility and character of the area. And last, HN-two-point-one and HN-four, which look at suitability of the proposed housing type and housing options. Wrapping up on page one with our points to consider. First, again, deals with the building orientation along Fields Drive and lack of screening treatments or any architectural relief for side or rear-facing facades. I believe the applicants plan to address the open space consideration and also the tree preservation in the middle, that point to consider. Again, deals with the pedestrian connection to Fields Drive and location of sidewalks. And then last, deals with the flooding issues and the concerns expressed by city staff during the CDR meeting. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is the applicant here or their representative?
Chris Davenport, nine-twenty-one College, swear to tell the truth. Mr. Nick Williams is present for Mr. Mark Williams. I submitted a POA to staff this week, so if it, whatever we need to do, Nick will stand in for Mark. So, as Rachel mentioned, we can commit on this development to thirty-five percent open space. And we will commit to making reasonable efforts to preserve healthy and mature vegetation within ten feet of the south and east property lines with diameters of no less than six inches. So that one's a little bit more tailor-made to this property. I think staff in their notes to me mentioned that those exterior boundary lines are where most of the trees are, so... Other than that, the density here is eleven-point-sixteen, which I think compares very favorably to some of the developments in the area. And obviously, we have, this is a brick-stone hardy board facade. Went too far. And Rachel, I was talking to Mr. Shirley back here. Is our concept on here? Am I just missing? Okay. I can't see this very well, and so I'm not going to fault anybody else for not seeing it very well. But he tells me that the sidewalk connections are shown here. And... Oh, Brian, where did you say? Where was the other one? In the curve? Yeah, right here. And then as far as throughout the community, you can see them between these parking lines here, 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 and on this side of the street, here, 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 and here, and then up here. So, that wasn't readily apparent to me either, but he says those are sidewalks as depicted.
There's, I guess there's no requirement in the development plan conditions that they be incorporated in that manner. It just says that the sidewalks will connect.
Okay, then let me add a word. Let me add a word. I didn't, that was my fault for not picking up what you were putting down, so... I would say at the end of seven, the development shall have a pedestrian connection to existing sidewalks on Fields Drive and shall have sidewalks throughout the development. And I would suggest that the thirty-five, the minimum of thirty-five percent open space... Do you want to reference the concept? Okay. Throughout the development as depicted on the concept. And then the open space, minimum of thirty-five percent, I would suggest we make number eleven. And then twelve would be the maintaining the healthy mature trees along the south and east property lines. And again, I would, I would stress, I think this is a, obviously another infill project, a tract of land that sits in some heavily developed part of our city that's not being used right now. And if you look at the density comparison, it's clearly not as intense as the developments in the area. And this is, I think this product is something probably not seen in that immediate vicinity.
Chris, what about the addressing the flooding?
On the bottom of the net zero, if better than existing, I'd address...
Well, I asked Brian this, and he may have to explain it better, but when I...
Let me interrupt, just say, I'm sorry, Chris. No, it's okay.
Yeah.
On page four, it says that DPC requiring that drainage plans, when reviewed and approved for this development, address the existing flooding issues along Yuma and Geronimo, referring to those streets. Is that addressed?
I don't have a DPC to address that Commissioner Warren, and I might have to lean on Brian here. My interpretation is that, and again, I'm out kicking my coverage, but the net zero, I thought was already required in their stormwater plans, in that they cannot, I mean, they had to deal with the water they had. Now, if I'm mistaken about that, I'm happy to address it by a DPC. But my disinclination is, just like we talked earlier about the lighting DPCs we used to put in, we used to put in, this has to be on sewer. We've kind of quit doing that unless I'm missing something. And if it's something different, then I'm happy to try to address with Brian.
You're right. We don't normally have development plan conditions for things that are already requirements. But I think it was such a concern that it would be a higher level of comfort for city staff if it was also acknowledged through the public hearing process and in writing in the conditions that the applicant realizes that that is the requirement.
But Ms. Hurt, how do we, how do we address, and I agree with you, but net zero or better than existing? How do you, I don't know how we, better than existing, how do you quantify that?
Well, you wouldn't do that here this evening. It would be through review with the city engineers and city staff. If this were to move forward, they could verify that that requirement is met.
Okay, so, but it does need to be a DPC. So, but it does need to be a DPC for this case?
That was the request of the city staff, that they include that in their application.
I would request, and again, this is my ignorance, and I mean that in the true sense of the word, lack of knowledge. It also did concern me though, Rachel, when you referenced other streets that aren't, I mean, Geronimo Way and as a Yuma. I don't know exactly what it means to say that, how this property and development is going to address drainage on those properties, if you follow me.
It references lots that are not part of this development, and which is kind of the concern you're bringing up. I think it concerns water that passes through those lots that already have flooding issues where this water then migrates onto these, this particular lot. So I think that's where the special attention is wanted, so it doesn't, just basically make sure you don't create a worse problem, or what they're really asking is, can you help fix that problem as well? And, yeah, and so we can, we can address that through, through CDR process if you're not willing to come up with something.
Please understand my hesitance. I don't want to obligate my client to deal with something not of their making, and I don't think that's the commission's intent either. I just don't want to do it by accident.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think that's the intent of city staff either. It's, there's already an issue, and it's coming to your property anyway.
Okay.
So, so be that as it may.
What's the solution? Do we put a DPC in there or?
So what I hear Rachel saying is that you want the developer to acknowledge his obligation to comply with the subdivision regulations as it pertains to drainage.
And maybe make all reasonable efforts to do what you can, I guess.
Certainly, I think they can obligate themselves to make all reasonable efforts to comply with the city's stormwater regulations. I mean, that goes without saying.
But I think, again, the hour's late, but they addressed these two streets, which already have an issue, and it's coming on to the applicant's property. And just, so basically what we're trying to say is, what Ms. Hurt's saying is, we're going, we recognize that, and the applicant's will make every, make every attempt to help, yeah.
I'm having a hard time fashioning language, because I don't, I'm just asking what y'all want, to be frank.
I would have the developer acknowledge his obligation to comply with subdivision regulations and as it pertains to showing the boundary.
We need to wrap with these stormwater regulations, because those are separate from the step
But if we just say regulations...
How about we just leave it off, and if we can just get acknowledgement on record that they, they recognize that there's issues both on this property drainage wise and some adjacent properties, and that we can look at those, all of those items when...
I can have Nick, I can have Nick acknowledge that, and frankly, more importantly, I can probably have Brian Shirley acknowledge that. That's, I mean, I know he's not the landowner, but as the engineer on it, obviously, he has to...
Don't, to Chris's concern, I don't want to set a precedent here where we're trying to do something beyond what we need to be doing in the zoning level.
Do I have Mr. Williams step up here then?
Did we address building board?
Oh, hold on just a second.
No, we have not.
So on that issue, so you've got the concept in front of you. What staff has suggested is, so this is Fields Drive, right, Rachel? And so these buildings will all face Fields Drive. So I guess here's my question, if you can give me some guidance. If I agree, if my client agrees to screen rear and side facades, would staff consider to be compliant with that? He would have to screen all the way up to this point? Because these, that's a side facade here. I mean, certainly, I could see screening here, but given the distance here, it just seems, I don't, it seems a little nonsensical to me. I mean, I cite, that's, that's a rear facade across that expanse.
Right, and I think when we had outlined the character of the existing buildings, we just said that, that they had incorporated foundation plannings around those areas, not necessarily a full screen like we've seen on some of the other applications.
Would it?
Where these would be foundation plannings up against the building itself along any of those side or rear facing facades.
Oh, how about buildings shall either be oriented towards Fields Drive or shall have foundation plannings around any side or rear facades? Would you think that would suffice?
That would be consistent with the buildings that are in the area now.
Okay. What was the phrase you used, Rachel?
Foundation.
So I've written, "Structures shall either be oriented to face Fields Drive or shall have foundation plannings alongside and/or rear facades." And with that, should I have Mr. Williams step up? Okay. Nick, can you come on up?
Hey, Nick Williams, 987 Cumberland Ridgeway.
Oh, true. Thank you, Ms. Williams. So, Nick, you're here on behalf of your father with the power of attorney, correct?
Yes.
And he understands, you understand you're here in his stead, and you're, you're obligating him to these conditions.
I do, yes.
Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. So the, so the three, I'm going to ask you whether you agree to, in his place, is number one, the development shall include a minimum of 35% open space. Number two, the developer shall make reasonable efforts to preserve healthy and mature vegetation within 10 feet of the south and east property lines with diameters of no less than six inches. And third, structures shall either be oriented to face Fields Drive or shall have foundation plannings alongside and/or rear facades. And there's one more, and that's that the sidewalks shall be throughout the development as depicted on the concept.
Yes, yes, we will.
In his place, you agree on those?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Williams, hang on, Mr. Davenport. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that has a question or a comment regarding this proposal? Yes, sir, if you would come to the microphone, please. If you'd state your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Your name and address.
Robert Cassidy. Robert Cassidy, 2611 Yuma Drive.
Mr. Cassidy, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, members of the commission. Just have a couple of concerns. I live at 2611, which is down that southeast corner where it floods. My neighbor, my yard, water comes all the way up. It has ever since, you know, the flood of 2010. So there is a concern there, a deep concern. You know, my, my point would be, where is the water going to run off to? How's it going to affect us? Because there is a huge issue there that needs to be addressed. I know we probably can't stop some of the housing, but, you know, I'm looking at a field behind me that's been there for 55 years, and then all of a sudden, we got to look at townhomes. I'm looking directly from my back porch or deck, not going to be looking at a home. There are some trees there, Bradford pears, which I don't really like Bradford pears, but it would be nice for the applicant to, to put some nice trees there so you don't have to necessarily look at that. I'm kind of shocked there's not more really homeowners on Yuma or Geronimo that are here, but I'm, I'm here. So I would like to bring that to your attention. And, you know, 35% open area, I'd like to have some of that at the back of my property on Yuma, so I could have some more room back there. And the storm drains, those storm drains have been there and they flood, so I wish somebody would look into that. I think my time may be up, I'm not for sure, but thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it greatly.
We have the engineers here, just for your information, when these final plans are done, the project, any project, they have to contain their own water. That's, that's regulations, so they cannot push water onto you. And I think that was part of our discussion tonight is about the, the water on Yuma or Geronimo, and they're going to make every effort to, the best they can, to mitigate that issue.
Is this, is this here, right? Is this here, right? Yeah, so I mean, the back, the townhomes are backing up into these backyards. And is there any vegetations? Do they? Well, there is, but I mean, they're going to clear most of it out because you're going to have to for the... Get the water retention in there. Well, and then also, I mean, the building becomes pocketed. So what are we saying? Rachel, what's my, is it 15 feet, what's my? Setback.
Building setback from the single family homes on the backside?
Yeah, I know. What's the, what's the setback on that, on their piece?
Be 25 feet from the property line.
Mr. Volker, I might point one thing out about that property line in common with the Yuma residence. On Brian's concept, he's shown a 10-foot landscape buffer across here. I mean, it's hard to read. I asked him about that a while ago, and his, I may be wrong, I didn't realize that, that we're considering multifamily and single family incompatible uses. Now, are we considering that? So that's why he's got the buffer in there, that landscape buffer. I heard y'all, you know, I think you were looking at that all the way across that, correct? So I don't have a DPC that says that, but the reason it's on the concept is Brian believes it's required due to the incompatible, arguably the incompatible uses. That's why it's on its concept.
And I may also add that if, due to the development plan condition on tree preservation, after that happens, if this were to move forward and they submit a landscape plan, any of those trees could be credited toward the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, but in the event that what's there now is less than the minimum required, they would have to supplement what's there now with additional trees to comply with the minimum requirements.
So then it is addressed, even though it's not a DPC, it is addressed in the ordinances?
Chris, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm not, I'm just asking out loud for a second. Would y'all consider a fence?
I have not talked to Mark about that, Mr. Williams, and I'll say this, if a fence goes up, all that vegetation's coming out.
It doesn't look like a whole lot anyway.
The problem is, the vegetation that you planted back is going to be, I mean, it'll take a while for that vegetation really to take.
To Rachel's point, that is one of those property lines that they asked us to keep. And we kept everything within, was it 10 foot, 10 feet of that property line, is what they committed to.
That would be within the required buffer.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that has to be a mixture of evergreens and deciduous or...
And three, a minimum.
So the landscaping ordinance says that you can use a combination of either a fence and deciduous trees, or a combination of deciduous trees and evergreen trees, or a combination of shrubs, evergreen trees, and deciduous trees. So there's three different options that the developer could choose from to satisfy the ordinance requirements.
Bradford pears don't count because they're not on the approved list, correct?
Right.
The only, only thing I would add to that, Commissioner Volker, if we're talking about, this gentleman's talking about water that's coming from Yuma through his property onto this property, I don't know how a fence would play into that. I don't, it probably wouldn't be preferred. What staff is saying is they, they want my client, and often this happens, right? The water currently is flowing, I guess, apparently on this lot, and nothing's happening to it once it gets there. When this engineering goes in, that water's going to be directed into the stormwater system somehow, that's going to be part of the plan. A fence would only seem to impede that in my eye, as opposed to a landscape buffer, which allows, at least allows that water to flow into the engineered system that comes about, comes about on this lot.
I would have to agree with that, especially since some of those properties that are of the concern are flood plain area, so we would not want...
Like I said, I was just, I was just talking out loud.
And I know your thought there, that's why I wanted to point out the landscape buffer that's on the concept.
I'm trying to be fair to the people on Yuma Drive.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davenport. Any other questions for Mr. Davenport? All right, hearing none, would call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan docket number 202284ZBG. Based on the testimony and documents presented at the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion's approved and goes to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Do we have any new business tonight?
No new business. I'll just mention that we do have our comprehensive plan recommendations all posted for all of the chapters, most of the, as well as the future land use map. Most of those are minor changes, but the most changes are to the future land use element and map, and we do have the videos posted for all of those sections, but certainly on, on the session nine, if you will, which is a future land use element. So feel, feel free to watch those. We do have a plan to bring that before you on November 17th to be the official public hearing, to where we'll consider those changes as well as the re-adoption of the plan. So we, we will be sending all of those notices out. So that's all I have.
And Ben, thank you for all your time and the meetings that you have done with that. We stand adjourned tonight and see you November 3rd. Thank you.